Order first time on agenda this afternoon.
Quite a few updates, starting with the events of the last 48 hours, 24 hours. So crews were in, starting at 8:30 yesterday morning, and the first trucks were deployed between 9:00 and 11:00. They were able to, by late last night, hit all the streets of these blocks. Unfortunately, we did realize after we've been down some streets, we were having some issues and salt didn't get spread. We had an issue with one of the salt spreaders and salt didn't get spread in that area. And we had a cloud that was not functioning, so we had to go back and hit some other side thing. Particularly in our here area, we didn't get hit until this morning more thoroughly. We had, I was mentioning this earlier, there was one accident yesterday afternoon and one today. The one yesterday was around Paul Features on 169 South. And today's was 192 just to the east, excuse me, west of 169. That closed traffic for a while during that and prior to and after, there were some slide offs on that stretch of the road. We, the plan is for crews to be out again probably around 5:00 tomorrow, treating those slip areas. Doing, I think tomorrow, obviously, if schools are open and as more people go to work, there will be more people on the roads tomorrow. Another tough commute, as I indicated, we have a cloud. We did not have any water line breaks, but Bob did share that during the power outages yesterday, we were affected by our raw water pump station and is it two load stations?
Uh, there was three.
Three load stations. All the load stations had sufficient extension to make it through that. The raw water pump, we did okay. We were probably testing the limit of time that we can be without power, so Bob and I have been talking and he's working with HGR to come up with specs for a generator for that. Something that we need to look at so we don't end up getting any issues there. So that's kind of where we're at with the number. One other item included in the budget is funding for a community survey. And I've been in contact with a group that does surveys for cities around the country. ETC Institute, they do the direction finder survey. And I have worked with them for the board to be born next week, especially on that. If we keep the timeline out right there, we have results of that in February. And I guess my final note is I met Nikki at a board meeting a few weeks back. She officially turned around on the 13th, so she's about two weeks in and have holiday. So this is a good thing, it's good to start and now she's on her full time. Appreciate you. That is very important.
Wait, am I ready to go back? Put this on the table back there once after, we did a nice little write-up. streetscape, please. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Good?
Hmm?
Alright, I know we haven't done this in a while, so. Alright, public comment, we have one. Karen Van Ham.
Hi.
You have three minutes and just take your name and address for the.
Sure, Karen Van Ham, and that 104A North Bridge. I rent there and I've been paying trash service there a whole time and I haven't received it. So I was hoping to add a refund on the lease that I've been paying. I arranged it by a landlord now for trash service, but I totally don't. So and it's been changed on my bills, so I won't be paying any longer going forward. Now there are some things that I could get refunded or be off, I have a thing. That's it.
So did we have something for that?
I have some questions, I don't know if you can do that. Any policy?
We can, I'll check if the SDAs can confirm that they have an ops service that trusts.
Right, yeah.
At which one of our, probably making adjustments.
Sure, yeah. We can do some research and grab the best way to address the situation and pull that through.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. That was it. Okay. Moving on to our company over there. Alright, you have your extended speech.
Do you want me to hear?
Uh, yeah, that's right, sir. Or if you're live, I'm promoting, be closer to the microphone.
Whatever works for you guys. I can see a lot of you. My name is Tom McRae, I'm a senior angel for Apples, financial consultants. We're a national firm with approximately 18 consultants. Basically, this is our red book, we do water, wastewater, stormwater rate studies for utilities throughout the United States. We have approximately 18 offices now, we have an officer, can't say who, myself, Jeremy, and then a couple of consultants, we assist us on this project a long way as well, are all based here in Kansas City area. So pleased to be here, excited to present our findings, our preliminary findings for the water sewer rate study. So, um, which one? Chief, okay. So preliminary comments, hey, first of all, I'll kind of go over what current rates. I may not all have that memorized, so I'll cover what current rate structures here in the city has been built. And then we'll talk about the water utility, we'll cover the CIP, which is one of the main drivers for the cost of water utility, as well as operating maintenance expense. Then we'll talk about the overall financial plan for utility. Then we're going to talk about some different rate options in terms of, we need rate increases for the water utility and sewer utility. And there are different approaches that we can look at, just depending on what our objectives are and what we want to accomplish with the rate increases, and we'll talk about that in a bit more detail. And then we'll have a typical bill comparison for the water utility. And then we'll do basically the same thing for the sewer utility, talk about the CIP, what's driving some of the expenses there on the capital side. Overall financial plan for the sewer utility, and talk about the rate options there, which are very similar to the water options. And then talk about the bills, the comparison to other utilities and what the increases look like. And then we'll talk, take a look at the bottom bills as well, which is really the most important thing because, you know, this is certainly, you know, when you get a bill, you know, everybody calls it the water bill, that's really your water sewer and your trash bill. Next slide, please. So just to refresh everybody's memory about our current rate structure looks like. For each of the water sewer utility, we have a base charge. We call it water meter service charge on the water side and just the wastewater service charge on sewer side. This is a fixed monthly charge, it's 1065 per month for water, 1287 for sewer. In addition, for each thousand gallons of usage, you pay a volume rate. For water right now, that volume is 669 per thousand gallons, and then for sewers, $3.06 per thousand gallons. You know, the sewer for, we use average water consumption for our residential. I suppose what this accomplishes is it makes sure that we don't charge customers for water that's used for irrigation. Next slide, please. This is a little small, but this covers basically the first five years of the capital improvements. We spent a lot of time working with staff, as you may be aware, there was recently a water master plant that was completed. So these projects come from that water master plant. And these are the projects that we need to maintain our water utility in good condition. So you can see that there's a lot of projects here. I can read these numbers and I must confess, I haven't committed to remember what they are totally each year. But this is one of the key drivers for what we need to increase our rates for, is to pay for this water master plant and all the projects necessary to provide safer and reliable service for the customers here in the city of Smithville. Next slide, please. So when we look at the overall water financial plan, what this, what this chart shows, you know, try this plan. I'm going to stand over here actually and try this plan, it's a little better. These bars represent our revenue requirement. Here's how much money we're projecting the utility will need for each of the, each of the future years, 2019 through 2024. The bottom grid, the light green, is operating maintenance expense. This is our cost of employees, electricity, all those types of costs are on every expense. We have to pay that to continue to operate the utility. This dark green bar, excuse me, this dark blue bar is existing debt service. This is debt we've issued to pay for capital improvements. This hatch is proposed debt service. We are projecting some additional debt service to help finance some of those capital improvements we saw in that previous slide. So this crosshatch is debt service that we haven't issued yet, what we expect to issue in the future to help pay for those projects. The light green bar is what we call rate fund and CIP. And what that is, is that's capital improvements that we pay cash for. And that cash comes from rates, it's generated through our rates. And finally, we have, the very top is contributions to reserves. We need to maintain a level of reserves in our bank account so that, you know, we're not living paycheck to paycheck literally and to protect us in case there's an emergency or we need to do something in case of emergency, repair to the system or if we have a revenue shortfall. And this is important to spec, particularly for water, because if we have a cool wet summer, our revenues could fall short of what we expect them to, because people will use less outdoor water and our revenues will fall. This is actually for on the water side. We're proposing a similar level of reserves for the sewer, but it's slightly less of an issue for sewer, because usually sewer is a little more stable. So this, it's hard to see these colors on this, I believe this is dark purple, actually. This dark purple line basically represents what our revenues would be under our existing rate. So if we didn't touch rates, we kept the rate structure we talked about at the beginning, that's how much revenue we generate. And as you can see, it's well below the top of these bars, representing that we need more money than that to do what we need to do. And so the proposed revenue that we're proposing is represented by, I believe this is light, again, it's kind of our own color. But that's, that represents what we're proposing for rate increases. Next slide, please. So based on those rate increases, we've looked at a few different rate options. The simplest option for us, we will be, let's say, latch more here, it's what we call across the board rate increase. Basically, take our existing rate structure, fixed charge, volume charge, and increase both of them by the same percentage. The advantage to that is every single customer in the city has been built, will see the same percentage increase. So if we increase rates 6%, everybody's bill will go up 6%. However, there may be some reason we want to change our proportion of revenues that we get from the fixed and volume charge. If we talk with city staff, and there is some desire for that. So option two that we looked at is having a larger percent increase for the usage charge, the volume charge, and a smaller percent increase for the base charge. And this accomplishes a few goals. The big one is, to some extent, it helps affordability, because the challenge is, the more we increase that base charge, the less people have control over their bill. And so this is especially true for those on fixed incomes. That's, you know, what we hear about that, is the little retired lady, you know, who only uses a thousand gallons a month. You know, we want to be mindful of them, so this would help protect them. It also promotes conservation, because the more you use, the more you pay for the increase that, since we're putting more of the increase on the volume charge. So that's what option two is. Now, option three and four are similar option one or two, but the difference here is, when we talk about that base charge, every customer in the city of Smithville pays the same water and sewer base charge right now. Excuse me. What is common is that the base charge increases by meter size, because that base charge is made up of a few different components, basically. So in that base charge of 1076, there's a piece of it that goes for meter reading, billing, collection. The cost for us to go out and read the meter, send the bill, collect the bill. And that's the same for every customer, regardless whether they're a small customer or a big customer, it costs us about the same for every customer. Then there's what's, then there should, then a piece of that is for meters and services. And that's really the cost of us putting in the meter in the ground and maintaining the meter, checking its accuracy if it's a larger meter, or replacing it every 10 years or so if it's a smaller meter. And that varies by meter size. A bigger meter costs a lot more money than a smaller meter. You know, a big six inch meter costs hundreds, if not a thousand dollars, whereas a small residential meter, five eight or three quarter inch meter, costs, you know, forty to fifty dollars. And so that piece increases by meter size. Then the third component is what we call readiness to serve. And readiness to serve represents the fact that when we, when a customer connects to our water system and our sewer system, even if they have no usage in a given month, they still get value simply by the fact they're connected to our system and we're maintaining that system and are ready to serve them, even if they decide not to use our system in a given month. And so they should pay something for, for having that, that service available, even if they're not using it in a given month. And so that, that's the third piece of that base charge. And so that piece is scaled up typically by the size of their water meter, which represents their potential demand on the system. The bigger your water meter, the more potential demand now in our system, and the more facilities we have built to be ready to serve you. And so what we're proposing with three and four is that instead of everybody having that same base charge, the larger meters should have a larger base charge, whereas it represents the increased cost of their meter and the increased cost of being ready to serve them, because they have greater potential demand on each of our systems. So option three is similar to option one, except with the larger meters having a larger base charge. But otherwise, it's across the board increase beside that change. And then option four is similar to option two, where we're going to increase the usage charge more and have less of an increase on the fixed charge. So for our small customers, they would see less of an increase. Next slide, please. So what does this look like in practice? You can see here, if we just do across the board, basically, our fixed, our fixed charge would go to 1118 on option one, and the volume charge would be 702. And then for the other option, for option two, which basically sees us increase, have a higher volume increase, if we go to 707, and this is somewhat what we want to discuss in the work session tonight, is, you know, are these right, or do you want to see more of the increase on volume, or is that too much? But you see, it doesn't have a huge impact, because basically, instead of going up by 1118, it goes up to 1092. It's a smaller percentage increase on that fixed charge for a higher volume. So again, what happens here is the higher volume users are going to pay more of that increase under this option than the smaller volume users. So it protects those on fixed income by saying, if you use less water, you'll see less of an increase. And of course, it promotes conservation, which is a secondary benefit. So option three, like I said, this is where, this is similar to option one, except we have, the bigger meters will pay a higher fixed charge. What you can see is, it lowers the impact on that, of that increase necessary to those customers in the first year. So we actually keep it the same, and this is the current charge, 1065 for our current base charges for water. So we can actually hold it the same for our residential customers, because we're increasing this fixed charge for those larger residential and commercial customers who have the larger meters. And then you can see, we're also getting more revenue, so we can have a smaller volume rate increase for those, for those customers. Option four, if we push more for volume rating, then we can actually hold the 1065 constant for several years. And again, this protects those, those on fixed incomes and all the vulnerable customers by saying, if you use less, you can keep your percent increase on your bill lower than you on the last one. So this is what the options look like on water. And I know this is a lot to digest, so are there any questions? And I know I got a question by email from one of you, and I'm sorry, I don't know which one you, but, um, okay. You know, kind of asking how this all, so hopefully that explanation, you know, in addition to my email, kind of explains, you know, why these increases, you know, look like this. But to some extent, these decisions on how to split these rate increases, there's no exact right answer. There's a American Park Association, that's a manual called the annual manual. It tells you how to do rate studies. But you can't just put in the numbers for the city of Smithville and it tells you exactly, this should be base charge, this should be volume charge, because these are policy decisions. And so we have a lot of discretion here, because to some extent, we could justify having a huge fixed charge, because when we look at the expenses of the water utility, a vast majority of our expenses are fixed, regardless of how much water we sell. If we sold no water in a given year, we couldn't lay off all our employees and still have the water system. We couldn't stop paying our debt, we couldn't, you know, stop buying supplies. The only thing that really goes down is chemicals and electricity. So that's majority of our expenses are fixed, because some people are like, well, our fixed revenue shouldn't match our fixed expenses. The problem is, we would have to have a huge fixed charge to do that, and it would be really difficult for those vulnerable customers I talked about. And so it really becomes a policy decision, how much of our revenues we want to recover on fixed versus volume, because there is no right answer, we could justify doing it on a volume basis. And quite frankly, there's still utilities that just have, for residential customers, they just pay a fixed charge. It's $3.00 a month if you're a single family residential customer. That's still not uncommon, even today. So any questions, comments, before we move on to sewer?
I think for residential.
Excuse me, so this is, uh, this is for all, well, this is for all customers. And then when we start talking about these two, this is for the five eight and three quarter inch meter. Because the large meters have larger increases. And I actually, after I did that, I actually have a slide now that I can show you what those look like, because I realized after you asked me that question, I probably shouldn't have included that to better demonstrate exactly what we were talking about. I can show you that. Okay, next slide, please. So what is, you know, when we look at a typical water bill, about $5,000, and this is, you know, kind of, for us, this is an average single family residential. Everybody uses, on average, everybody uses more or less, but this is roughly an average bill. You know, what does this mean? So you can see, it's pretty small difference between some, between some of these. Of course, with the larger meter size, if we charge more for the bigger meters, that puts less pressure on our residential customers, we have smaller meters. But overall, you know, these, when you look at the percentages on these increases, they can certainly be daunting, but basically, we're talking about $2.30 a month if the bill goes up with these increases on option one. And similar dollar months on options two and three and four. You know, the percentages can be scary, but when you look at the absolute impact on the bills, it's not a huge impact. But I, you know, we don't want to minimize that, because to some people, you'll get, some people coming in, they're saying, that's basically a gathering up, you know, that we're charging more every month. And so we do need to be mindful of that, so that's where the balancing act comes in, you know, balancing, you know, we need these increases to continue to provide safer and reliable service to our customers, and we have to, you know, do our best to decide where those increases come from. Next slide, please. So the question I'll do, all this is compared to our, you know, neighbors. So you can see right now, our bill is pretty much middle of that $44, so there's some that are lower, and there's some that are, that are a little bit higher. Even with the increases, you know, depending on the, on the different across the board, gives you the greatest increase on our single family residential customers, 4631, but, you know, the volume, if we put more in volume, it's only a five cent difference. And then the other impacts you can see here, they would be a little bit less. But we wouldn't be out of ballpark on any of these, in some of these cities, we'll have increases in the next few months that we just don't know about yet. So on the water side, you know, we're pretty much random with the increases, we'll be towards the top end, but everybody's very tightly bunched here. This is, this is a really tightly bunched survey compared to what we typically see for communities.
Yeah, Cardi, is there, there's, I think there's, that way, next slide.
Yeah, they have some, they have a lot of big capital improvements in Cardi that they're paying for. And this includes the, the most recent increase, but we, we know for a fact, they're going to have some more big increases coming down the road. Next slide, please. So we're going to kind of look at the same thing for sewer. Now sewer, we have a little, we have some upcoming projects, and this is, you know, talking to staff, we're building some projects right now, and this will help us, because this will get us off of Kansas City sewer for, for some of these customers. And then we have a few other projects in here, but there's, obviously, you can see, we don't have as many projects here as we do for water. Now, we expect in the future, we're going to fill that in where we complete the sewer master plant, we just don't have it. So we can, we know this isn't the end of sewer, everything will be great when we're done what's listed here, but for right now, this is what we're working with for the next few years, this is what we know about. And so this is kind of the plan for the moment. Next slide, please. So here's what the sewer financial plan looks like. You know, this is the similar slide to what we looked at for water. So you can see the bar, O and M. And you can see here, you know, basically, our existing revenues are barely paying for current operating maintenance expense, but they're not even paying for existing debt service. So we really need, we need more money from sewer utility just to pay, basically, when you look at this, O and M, and existing debt service, we're not even making enough money right now to pay for bills that we've already obligated the utility to pay for. And then, of course, future debt service for some of those projects we've looked at, some rate fund and CIP in the future, just a little bit, and then eventually some contributions to reserves. Next slide, please. So basically, we have the same options on the sewer side as we have on the water side. In terms of cross-the-board increase, we want to do higher volume, have different meter charge with the cross-the-board rate increase, different meter charge with the higher volume charge increase. And again, here, if we go with these options increasing with larger meters, we can hold the 1287s the current charge. Under option three, we can hold the 1287 for the first year, and then start increasing their meter charges in 2020 beyond. And if we do the higher volume with the meter charge, we can hold 1287 constant for the first three years, while we increase that, the volume charge by more. You can see, we have some more substantial increases here, because they, you'll see, the volume charge has to go up fairly significantly on these options, or the base charge has to go up if we do a cross-the-board. Let's look at it, a little comparison, next slide, please. So what does this mean in terms of bills? It's been more substantial here, you can see, it's almost $5.00 a month on the sewer side, but the sewer bills, well, it makes it worse. The sewer bill is smaller right now, but it really needs to be bigger, as we saw, because we're not even recovering our existing obligations right now with the sewer rates, whether they're at. And so then it comes, it becomes a question, how do we want to split it up? Same, same four options we looked at on our side, across the board, you can see, higher volume, different meter charges. And again, if I haven't made this clear yet, certainly, we recommend this different meter charge approach. This is common practice, and if it's, you know, and it does shift, you know, we're not trying to stick it to businesses and larger users, but it's a fairly appropriate measure that's common in practice in the industry. And quite frankly, it's not a huge sum of money, it doesn't answer all of our problems, but it does help, and it is fair and equitable to do that charge for those larger meters, a higher service charge. Next slide, please. So you can see, our sewer rates are really low. They're lowest on the board, same. It's not surprising, we're not paying more bills right now. So even with the increases in the first year, we can see, we're still. They're, they're getting paid, correct, I shouldn't say that. We're, we're not recovering. We're not, you know. I mean, you can see Liberty, I'm sure you're often with Liberty, I lived in Liberty at the time, when they made the decision. You know, they really wanted to be off Kansas City, that's what it's cost them, and they're probably still going to go off more from there. So you can see, there's certainly, although the increases percentage-wise for bigger on sewer, we're still well below average on sewer, after the first year increases. Now, we have additional years in there, well, at similar levels, but as you know, all these communities are doing racing rates too, especially Kansas City, their rates go up 10, 12, 15 percent. I mean, Kansas City is running into a challenge, because so many communities are doing what Liberty did, what you guys are doing, they're getting off. You know, Johnson County is building a huge new sewer street in the life, so they, they're going to stock some of those to Kansas City as well. I mean, they, they lost, Liberty was, I think, their second largest customer, and there was Johnson County, which is their first largest customer, which doesn't help. which doesn't help the situation that they've got to pay to stop all those combined sewer levels. It doesn't, it doesn't lower their expenses, I mean, to lose those customers, quite frankly. So like I said, you know, we've looked at water as one, and we were kind of in the middle. We'd be towards that top end for water, sewer would be really low. So next, we're looking at combined bills. It's really what everybody says with water bill. What they really need is combined water bill. So this is, you know, typically combined water bill. And you can see, so combined water bills can go up by about seven dollars a month. Under, you know, give or take a little bit more, a little bit less. For a five-thousand-hour customer, they're charging seven dollars a month increase. Go to the next slide. So what does this look like compared to the bigger communities? You can see, we're towards the bottom end when we look, when we consider it as a combined bill. So Liberty, with the checks, with really high sewer rates, they're fortunate that at least they own their water plant that runs pretty well. And so they have low-to-low water rates, but they're still towards well above where Smithville would be at. Carney we were talking about. You know, Carney would still be below Carney, and Carney has big increases coming to pay for their capital improvements as well, as well. So I think, I think that was the last slide.
It is.
So the main item for discussion, recommending rate increases to pay for natural improvements as well as our existing expenses, you know, when we look at this financial plan. But there is, you know, like I said, there's discretion on how we recover, make these increases across the board, and the way is the simplest way to do it, because in the new days, basically, everybody pays the same increase. But it doesn't necessarily accomplish our objectives. Do we want to try to protect, you know, low-income, fixed-income folks? And is there a reason? In our case, at an absolute minimum, certainly, we're recommending we implement fixed charges that increase with larger meter sizes, consistent with industry standards. Most other communities already are to do it, and it does take some of the pressure off of our residential customers, for good reason. Not just trying to stick it to businesses, but just charging larger meters for the service that we're providing, and the benefit that they receive being connected to our system. And then there's the question that, you know, do we want to go ahead and move forward with having larger increases on the volume rate, but then do we do it on the base charge to accomplish some of the same goals? So that's the end of my prepared presentation. But do you have any answer, any question, any other discussion you'd like to have?
Hey, Dan, a question for you, since you probably have a zone somewhere, Dan, of course. Our biggest customer is hospital, McDonald's, Sonic, what would their increases look like on option four? But you could call it. We still have that public hearing, obviously.
On sewer side.
Well, certainly, before we, before you have a public hearing, you know, my recommendation, you want to narrow it. You know, we're trying to narrow this down to the option that you want. And that's why it was on four options, but ultimately, we're soliciting, your staff as well as ourselves, are soliciting your input into what you'd like to see in terms of pricing objectives, and how we can reduce rate increases.
I guess I have a question. On the size of meters, are all residential's the smaller meters for, or some are the larger meters?
I believe that they're all five-eighths or three-quarters. There might be some that are an inch though.
What about that?
But I think we're talking about one inch and under. That's on a.
That's a question for you, is that cap order would be one inch and under perhaps?
Do we do one inch under, or three-quarters under? We can do one inch and under, and it kind of depends on your standard, because, for instance, I had a conference call with another community just saying, when we're talking about meter size, the same height. And this is a question for you. Three-quarters is standard for residential. And so, quite frankly, anybody who asks for one inch, they have it for a reason. They ask for a bigger meter, so they should probably pay a bigger meter charge. Now, I've been in communities where really old houses have five-eighths, medium-aged houses have three-quarters, and new houses, they only do one inch above. In that case, we, we kind of combine it and say, it's not a difference in service. It's our policy that now one inch is the smallest we installed it. In our case, that's not the case. We installed at a three-quarter or two of now. So if you have a one-inch meter, you ask for a one-inch meter, so you should pay more for it, because that's more potential demand in our system. What's the housing authority? Housing authorities to, that's for multiple units.
But there are, there are forgiveness in our two larkeyings, I want to be sure.
And again, to some extent, it's not appropriate, you know, we're burning down a big multi-family building the same as a single-family house for those charges.
And would the apartment complexes have a single meter as well, or?
Houses have one meter. One on ninety-two, south ninety-two there?
Yeah.
It has single meters.
And then what about the one five-dollar downer? Is that a single meter?
Has a single meter also. But the one south of ninety-two now, that is going to be changed. We're going to put a single meter in there, because all those water lines in there belong to the company that runs it, that owns it.
Gotcha.
So they're just like a customer, so we're going to put a single meter in there. And if they want, they can break down the readings off of their. But right now, we're reading their meters, and we're typing, we're going to work for them.
And then what about the new, the pillars of the library, is that one meter?
I think it's two inches also.
Should be clarified that that's one meter per building, per building, per for the place.
No, right, one meter.
It's just all one meter?
All one meter. And then one tap.
But the new's, the clay tree, is that what we're building, or one for us?
That's.
Yes.
We started off at one inch per four-plex. Now they're on to two inches per two four-plexes.
So, and that's some.
Somehow it figures out, save you money on impact fees, but I don't know.
Okay.
So some are one ways, some are.
And that's my next question on the sewer. Are we, are we increasing impact fees as well in option, these options?
Don't have that information. We don't have any recommendations here, so that's one that I'm going to take a look at.
Because we do have a lot of new development, right? And if you get a two-inch, the same price that I get on a single-family building.
They get a two-inch, I think the sewer impact fee is not also.
Okay.
The sewer impact fee is based on the size of the water.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty typical. And in some extent, that's how we recommend we do sewers, you're basing it on the size of the water meter, because that's potential demand. You could say, well, if you had some large industrial customer, like, say, even leader not over the burden, because, for instance, we're supposedly, they'll say, oh, we're going to go with water product. That's really not true, because, you know, like, five percent ends up going to product. The rest is just still washing and all sorts of other stuff.
Five gallons of water, drink one gallon of beer. That's why they call them.
I don't have number four. Yeah, I mean, certainly, I, I think I made it pretty clear, we're recommending three or four, just because of that increase on the base charge, that we think is more than appropriate. And, you know, consistent with industry standards, and I think there's a sound cost justification for it. You know, when you talk difference between across the board, then once we've decided we've got change, we're increasing the volume charge. Based on discussion with staff, we felt that four would be a good option, you know, to increase the volume charge more than the base charge. Just, our base charge, it's not, it's not super high, you know, when you look at how much we pay fixed charge, but it's certainly not above the. And there always is that concern, it impacts, you know, our water usage more.
Yeah, I'm going to play a watch and board, and I think that, you know, someone was concerned about the increase that we're going to see in the bill, they just couldn't travel the waters. That's, that's all we.
One question I had is, what was the projection for the growth in cash flow base over the five years?
Uh, we're using one percent? What's our growth rate?
Uh, it's like two, it's close to two percent.
Yeah. I have a kitchen right on.
That's about right.
Two percent. Actually, I have a one bar, you know, so, you know, there's a pretty good slope on our, you know, three. Rather than just a rate speed to growth, because, you know, we are four-shipping, we've got a lot of growth. But part of the challenge of the two flip sides, a lot of times, we see increasing total gas consumption in new houses, tend to use less water than old houses as well.
So if you're planning on boards, we're very automatic.
For, uh, for where's where we're at? As noted in the staff memo, there is a thirty-day notice period for rate increase. We can do a couple of things. We can put together that notice, and put a process together, or bring back information on that impact on those, kind of the industrial, the larger industrial uses. And if it tends, we do that information, have a calendar, that can come through before. And we can move forward either of those ways. Probably, it's a, it's a small time to be able to study it, be any time, we can add it.
We didn't really see much of the, the, the.
The tenant, are you ready for the next work session?
Work session, so it's, yeah. Rather than have it, unless you all wanted it, the regular session. I think we've tried to have this type of information in a work session, where we can dive into it a little bit more. So we can definitely do that on a ten, and at that point in time, then also have a calendar for if this is something we want to proceed with and process.
Could be a way to develop some sort of an online calculator, or someone who can just punch in, you know, their usage, and see what, whatever we go with, what that estimated increase is going to be over.
I'm sure there's one, you know, but if somebody's done somewhere, they do. Unless we know what the rates are.
We don't know what the rates are.
That's what I think.
Not that's how it sounds.
If that sounds familiar.
But that would be very expensive if you wanted us to, to rate the rates. That would be definitely.
We're all in on the cost, so.
Well, I mean, this wasn't a super obviously expensive project, but I mean, I'm not trying to make them down. Not going to be very expensive if you want us to do it, but then we could probably, you know, here's, here's the house, you know.
You could do one thousand, two thousand, you're up.
You could shoot a table, yeah, I mean, honestly, that would probably work okay for a community this small. Because we've had some where literally, you type in aggressive, polls your actual data from the building system. That's probably more of the one you hear.
To be more cost-effective than having a small band of that.
Pretty much, I was in Kansas, Columbia Insurance, they had a customer service reps there that were pulling people's information, so that they had their exact usage, their exact usage for, for purposes of the public here at their water increase. That's the level of service they wanted to go with. Now, they also decided to go with very high increase, where literally, we were doubling, they had a conservation rate for heavy irrigators, their bill was going to basically be doubled. And so there was some concern about.
But that's a.
Well, and again, and that is, and that's why I said, this is, it's discretion, how much you have from the volume versus the fixed charge. The city of Columbia, they decided that they wanted to promote conservation, because they kind of have a big nugget out there. They have to build plant expansion, it's going to cost them a lot of money, and they want to avoid that for as long as possible. In their direction, from their advisory board, their council was, we want to hit the people who irrigate. And it's cost justified. It's not just doing it out of spite, there's cost reason for doing that. And we can justify it from a cost of service perspective, but not many communities want to go that far where they're doubling anybody's rates. But in their case, that's something decided to do.
Well, I think we have direction for you all, to bring the information out of there.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
All right, next is out of number five.
Many good advice.
Yeah.
Because I'm technically a member of the HOA, I'm going to say, and.
Awesome. And by the way, school just, I think, Kansas School for Tomorrow, I think they're ready for that one. Bryce, Dan, is it you? Or do you have the?
I'm sorry.
So included in your pack, I have some information on the, I think you just asked me what's from the Hill of Shannon HOA. I provided some information on, I think, one time where I've ever done this in the past, and that was with a February two thousand eighteen adjustment by the board, dating all the way back to a May two thousand seventeen bill for the Harwood Townhomes HOA. I ran you through some figures there. Their original bill was fourteen thousand and some change, you can see how many gallons of usage that leak took up. And they had originally paid fifty hundred towards that balance, and at the time of the consideration by the board, there was a remaining balance of eight thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. And it'd be, in my opinion, a little arbitrarily, the agreement was made to reduce that remaining balance to seven two hundred. So the adjustment was roughly one thousand, or was, one thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents, which is about seven point nine five percent of their original bill. So I provided the Hills of Shannon, HOA, they had their original bill of one thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents for two hundred and seventy-three thousand gallons of usage. They've already taken that balance in full. If we decide, or if the board approves any kind of resolution discounting their bill in regards to their leak, the amount is, is up to the board, but for a comparable, the seven point nine five percent of their original bill was one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Ultimately, it's a worst decision on a dollar amount to settle, to settle on.
So on the Hills of Shannon, that nineteen-hundred, you put in sewer also?
It's the irrigation, so it's a wall.
So then it all was wall?
And it's the same for the Harwood.
Because with the builder, we had a little. Where the seven point nine five percent.
No, it, I, it's, it's only because, it's only because they agreed to reduce it to seven two hundred, which is happening to be a seven point nine five percent of discount.
The Hills of Shannon had the adjustments.
Not that I know of. So at this point, if the board wants to proceed with this, that would just be a dollar amount, not bringing it to the board. What was the, was it in the quarter?
If next two seconds.
I guess my comment would be, this would be our second, like, eight, this two, or at least thirty, the set of precedents going forwards, that we would always do. If we were to do this, seven point nine five on any other, generally, we'd go forwards with the same issue. This is the second. I know it's still pace, but pace, but.
What was the normal?
Hills of Shannon?
I don't have the normal bill data in front of me here.
You just have the bill, so.
Yeah.
Is there some break in that?
Yeah, it's seven twelve, so.
I'm actually billed.
Actually, yeah.
That's twelve hundred.
I don't know, a little bit more behind than, um, the other one that we did. Think that we're aware of in the water department, where we, there was a leak suddenly, we just wanted to find it, so they had been researching, or searching for it, and we can't cross it, so that's why we're still.
I don't remember, you should have a look, basically.
We do.
We do.
I sent a note, I sent a note, I was going to say, you can shut up. Sitting there, you know, just waiting.
I'm scared of water too much.
So what's the actual, I mean, I, there's a lot of numbers here. What is the actual after, after discount, what the wholesale cost is? And what's, what's that, what's that number look like? Between what they're paying, what they would have paid with that wholesale?
So the whole, the wholesale rate is four dollars and sixty-nine cents per thousand gallons. So after you get that.
Isn't that what we do with the last one, we, we have to put in wholesale?
We charge a lot of the Harwood Townhomes? And they just, I don't believe so.
We talked about that, so I don't know.
I was just saying, they got a consent of two hundred, whatever that.
He says four sixty-three?
Four sixty-nine, I'm pretty sure.
I don't know, wholesale is still like ten thousand.
That's written about. Yeah.
There was a little bit of a break down.
What, what are they asking for me, is there anything in particular?
Not necessarily, they're just asking for some sort of.
They were about to. Did they try and, what, the customer repairable age, or?
They, they have, they're, they're so, they're repaired, so. He's the one that caused the leak, he's the one that repaired it, whatever it's caused.
And it was two twenty-five.
And it was two twenty-five.
I'm curious if those individuals, if they're the ones that caused the problem, if they're often, for sure, or they can take care, they, they try to go after them. If they know for sure that that was what caused the problem.
I'm looking, I kind of, I'm not agreeing with you. They have some that, that caused the issue. I think that they should go after them.
I think it's, it's a different situation than what was in Harwood here, because they're just trying to find, yeah. And actually, I think I'm, I'm, I think that's option.
Do you necessarily need motion destruction if that, if that's the direction of the?
So, one, I can't do anything.
Yeah, the, the.
Sure. Might as well stay up there, right? You have the, you're in a order? All right. We let them back to the table. Come on down.
So, by the way, you have, some fiscal year eighteen un-audited numbers. You have all the details of individual line items as well. You'll have an item on consent agenda for December fourth meeting to improve in October for budget report, which is those line items, applying to our line details. So, I can go into, to any specific one line item case or some question on that, they will answer. But I'll look at each one, I have little graphs here, providing the standard report, see if you have any questions and have some conversation. So, the first graph you have is a revenue comparison, budget to actual. And you can see that in almost all of our funds, with the exception being some of the police and court grants, which are fairly hard to project. We were well over a hundred percent in collection. And it's no secret that back then, we were very conservative in our revenue budget numbers, so it's not surprising that our revenue came in so much higher. As we budgeted 2019 budget, we tried to make those revenues really pretty accurate while still making just a touch on the conservative side. So, I don't think you see anything like that when it comes to nineteen, but in eighteen, that's how it was. If you next, with the next chart, you have expenditures, budget to actuals, as well as some encumbered expenditures. So, those are our purchase orders that we've issued in fiscal year eighteen that we've not paid the full. That would be the land in the general fund and some projects that we exempted, have in the water waste water fund. So, when those actual invoices come in, we'll still use 2018 money to pay those, those expenditure or the encumbrances that are. So, we have, it's not really a surprise that a majority of our funds came in under budget for expenditures. One thing I do want to point out is the sanitation fund. We were over budgeted in expenditures on the sanitation fund. If you take that seven hundred and twenty-six thousand that we spent compared to the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand in revenue that we brought in, we did actually that a positive that fund, but we were over budgeted in expenditures. I do have enough for our auditors asking them if it's worth our time, or their time to go back and do a budget amendment for either. That's now we're closed to try to balance that out. Questions about total revenue, total expenditures? The next chart we have is just a description of all the individual purchase orders that make up those encumbrances. You'll see the different bids and specifically the bridge, the water lines, not quite paid out fully, as well as the lane, a couple smaller expenses that go along with that, that acquisition.
I think that's something that we forgot, the staff report, it's paid, it's closed.
Yes, yes. We, we on it as of last, no, we could go and say.
Five is still there?
Fourteen.
Is it next time? Christmas presents.
And a bridge.
A lot of rains and a.
The next chart we have is a net gain and loss chart by fund. You can see that the general fund and the water waste water systems fund, both we spent more in eighteen than we took in revenue. A little paragraph above that, I explain that in both of those funds, we actually budgeted that deficit. So, we knew that we were going to spend a little more, we were going to invest in those projects that they have coming up, and we have, we're in both of those funds, we're still, our actual deficits came in less than our budgeted deficits. Questions on those? The next chart, I provided a, any cash balance for each fund. As above that is how much of those cash balances were restricted balances. And then the, this small little chart right after that is kind of a breakout line of what those restricted lines actually are. In all of our funds, we have, any healthy balance, we have a forty percent required reserve in general fund, and a twenty percent required reserve in the water waste water fund, the bulk of those numbers. One thing that we didn't talk about today, that's part of the rate study, is there, there might be a new suggestion coming on how we should actually, sort of looking for, revise our, our reserve for the water and waste water fund, which is twenty percent, which is a relative arbitrary number. They suggest, what was it? It's?
Ninety day operating.
Ninety day.
I think, depending on what rate we do, depending on how much.
How much? Yeah. The rate that you go together, I believe was sixty days.
Oh, it's hardly sixty days.
So, it's, it's, it, rather than having a percentage of our expenditures, because those expenditures, you know, aren't, there aren't, there aren't those fixed costs necessarily, but a period of time, they recommend sixty to ninety days. And I believe that we should have, we should have asked them on that and make sure that we cover that with the rates again. I believe it includes a recommendation for a sixty day reserve. And the, the numbers that they provided include that in, in those.
Their projections.
Their projections.
Changing our reserve.
So, we'll change, so we would change the reserve policy to reflect that.
Is it twenty percent?
Twenty percent, or like you guys said that just a few months ago. And really, in this interesting standard, it's to do in, in operating days as opposed to a percentage.
So, I'll highlight some of our investments so far, and they're not too crazy yet. We have six six-month CDs in the general fund and six six-month CDs in the water waste water fund. So, those investments that we've made don't even cover our entire reserve. The rest of our, the remainder of the reserve is sitting in our regular bank account. So, I sent that email out this morning in response to Mayor Bull's question, and then simply sent it out to all of you. So, I'd like to get some information on the comfortability of the board to invest additional dollars. Do we want to go all the way and invest a hundred percent of the reserve funds, knowing that we have even more of a cash balance on top of that? Do we want to invest less than all of the reserve, keep some of the reserve amount in cash in the bank? What are some thoughts of the board?
Right now, we have.
So, the, the.
Three hundred thousand, they're, sorry. How much we have, like, in half of our reserve right now vested?
Correct. Thirty-one. Yes.
So, I think there's actually two questions. Do we go with investment strategy, or do we have the six months or different deposit? And look at something more like a CD ladder, where we're going to get a little better interest, or still roll over every six months, two years? And we increase that amount of our investment.
I think the other we have to look at is, I think, unfortunately, have to determine on the water, you're going to go over this, well, yes, you're rolling CDs, that would take care of that.
And I think we should just focus on general fund first, because we know that it's been forty-four little nine. And having that small of an investment and that small of a CD, you are going to bank more than I have, so.
I was going to ask, do we ever go out and bid for those rates?
We have.
Typically, states know how to make their deposit, because they're a couple of years.
Correct. We have a, that's, that's. Yeah, and, and that's part of the, obviously, too, I mentioned in that email, is we've had a couple, couple of different investment firms, one out of New York, and one at least has a Kansas City branch on other, or Kansas City, have reached out to us, and they're interested in being our investment, investment permit, and laying all that cash flow information out there and providing some suggestions on exactly how we can invest that money.
I think it's supposed to be to, I think we need to put our, put it out, put in, period, our positive counts, and let them come out with investment strategy as part of that.
So, what's the benefit of not giving it, if we can?
Well, the, the benefit is that it's, it's available to us in income.
Thanks for your interest on.
Yeah.
Just have you covered there?
What's that?
When, when you left, had you?
Well, when we had an unbalanced budget, we dipped into our reserve every year. We dipped into our reserve almost a million dollars this year in general fund. So, the advantage is we have cash available to be able to do that, as we're trying to budget more accurately and look at what, what it is we're actually doing in state, in those expenditures and.
You had a little take on it right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and you use that amount of money that you have readily available for those things, if we wish to flexibly respond in an emergency.
But the.
Well, we still have a reserve.
We still have, we still have a reserve, we got to stretch of that excess.
And the penalty, the penalty on early withdrawal CDs is really significant on that. The risk on taking a CD out four months of maturity.
The only thing that we need.
Maybe right is three months, centers for.
And the only other thing that we need to take a look at is ensuring that whatever we're doing is complying with federal and state requirements for local owners, because there are just more restrictive than, than what would be the case. So, we have to be careful with those investment of public funds. Those are all.
So, did I get there that there's a suggestion to, to put out a deal for both our, our actual deposit, daily deposits, as well as investing? And do you want that to be one RFP or two separate RFPs, or we might be going to two? Thanks for terms.
Or you, one, if we did a CD, one may have been on the old.
Right.
I can see very detail of when you bid, or what you're wanting them to, um, come at you with, unless we start to start this, or if the property is paid, check, correct them, just.
I'm going to, we might go to, uh, Garry Meyer, or Senator Sisyppe.
And I think that you might be wanting to include in there getting the reduced rate on our, our processing fees, which could pass on much as for anyone.
Yes, you're correct.
Would there be any benefit if we did combine the two RFPs in one? Was there a price break at all? Or was it really?
I don't know, for, for, necessarily, we have, over, looking at this, those that we don't have, kind of, for cost. So, we're asking, you know, to, you know, reduce some costs.
Right.
Possibly, because, you know, the investment CDs are still paying out.
Right. Okay, I will get both of those out to you.
And we back to how much percentage of the reserve we want to get then?
So, so on the, the general fund, forty percent and forty percent. And what percentage about forty percent, if you want invested versus free cash? Do you want to look at the same type of keep sixty days of free cash in there?
Well, we have another recommendation.
Yeah. We'll just have our, our recommendation, or, but we also got to remember our budget versus sitting in free cash. This is just your, this is, we're a billion plus budget, that's in cash, plus the volume that's not invested.
Correct.
And I'm comfortable with a hundred percent, investing a hundred percent of that forty percent reserve. I don't have a problem with that, especially knowing that we're sitting on reserves right now.
If you do have proper CD ladder, or any type of investment, where you're getting something every six months, every year, or every three months, we are going to set it up, you're not really waiting that long. We're penalizing that much. If we had a debt of three years CD, right now, our investment policy is three. If you want to go beyond three, we'd have to amend that as well.
Right.
But, technical part of the.
But even if you think, you know, our, our, our general fund budget's probably not going to go down, so that reserve constantly going to go up. So, if we, we can take certainly a portion of that reserve and not invest in a longer term, because we're probably not going to benefit that.
And now I go back and look, I'm going to ask Pat to do it. One thing that maybe we should look at is what was the biggest, kind of, negative expense that we had, kind of, with the reserve, and kind of look at that, and maybe to start on, kind of, to keep the cash reserves for sure.
And we also should keep in mind our reserve policy lays out, considering four very specific things. Our budget mandates, one more time, one large time, a single large time expenses. So, I'll get that, I guess. Okay, we can go on to the next couple charts here. You have revenue budget versus actual by general fund department. So, you can see actually what revenue each department took in. Again, no surprise that controlling of our departments are over budget on revenue. I'll point out real quick the two that came in below, the police department revenue budget. We had an approved grant to get some equipment, specifically computers and e-taking software into our vehicles. I believe that grant was for somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars, I think that was exactly, a short-term grant. And when all, all these ventures actually came in for that, we actually were, we were, we were a hundred percent, and it was about fifty-nine thousand dollar project. Under budget, just on that one grant project. And also the animal shelter, I think we were a little, what we budgeted for donations didn't quite come in. I don't know, I know that we moved a PES day out from downtown, or Smith Ford this year, and that, we did see quite as, as big of a donation amount, just from that one event. But that's where that, that department came in under budget as well. And then the last chart here is the, or the second chart is the expenditures by general fund department as well. Most of our funds came in under budget in expenditures, couple we'll look over. I'll touch on those real quick. The administration department, if you go back and look at somewhere this year, there we know that we had a changeover in the city administrator, so we paid some severance out. We appointed an interim and increased salary. And then we also went out and hired a firm to come in and help us with that, so that puts over budget in that department. Finance department, by budget, we paid out in credit card fees, one of them we budgeted. The good news about that is we also took in more in credit card fees to pay that out. The senior center, we've been over a tiny bit there, that's mostly to do with the fact that our insurance rates increased on that property. And then the animal shelter, we had budgeted a little bit of money to complete the, the construction of the second shelter, and we're looking at. Well, one thing I, I, I pointed out in my, in my paragraph, low back, is in the parks and recreation department, it looks like it came in really under budget, but I keep in mind that a hundred and fifty thousand of that was for the parent charter, didn't do in the eighteen budget. And then we go to the last page of the staff report. I provided some information on our current construction projects, the group of the GI Oban, bonds, and sort of, and tuitionses. I gave you the original estimates, those are from back when we even proposed the language to voters on how we came up with the five point six to five million. We have four of those projects are a bid, three of them, two have done really, are still waiting to, to go out to bid here a little bit. What we've spent on them, three began to fiscal year eighteen, and a number of projects done, shoot space just begun, second three got finished. What we've spent on them, three by the end of fiscal year eighteen, the number of projects done, street space just begun, second three, I haven't done anything, or, beating the street up, anything in those. The sixty-eight thousand closing cost, that's the closing cost for just the first issue, that's just the two million that we already... And then the final chart here is some information on a few repairs and maintenance line items in the water wastewater systems fund. This is where we pay for things, like emergency repairs that come up, some miscellaneous repairs and maintenance that we don't necessarily know what we're, we're... What's, any of the, it's just going to come up, pop up. You can see what we've kind of budgeted in these different areas. One thing I did want to point out is in the water plant, repairs and maintenance, that three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar budget figure, we included two hundred fifty thousand dollars to clean one of our two ruins, and we actually didn't do that maintenance. That's why we came in way under budget and have all that. So our auditors are going to be here, the lead of December tenth. They'll be here with me, doing all of our financials at that point. They'll, they're usually here for about a week, they last year were in here for four days. They'll get out of here, go back to their offices, and they'll stay in, you know, correspondence for a few months, and then hopefully, I communicated them, to them that I would like to have our audit back to us by the end of January, so that when we're looking at that second GEO bond issuance going to market in February, we already have our, our audit beginning.
Of all audit items from last year, three?
Yes. It'll be my third, I came in very... First one.
Third audit, second actual, yeah.
Do you have any questions for me? Any questions on this fiscal year eighteen? Okay, if anything, everybody else?
I want to have a question, Dan, and this is great information for you guys. If at any time it's like a budget in with this, and there are things that you want to, or more information to do, you know, let's take a look at that. We can, they can, whether it's, a lot of finance work, and, and if there, if there's needs, somebody to get into that.
All right. Anything else before we break for a week? It's kind of pretty great, a lot of time. So we have BDC tomorrow? We'll entertain a motion picture. Off there, everybody say aye.
Aye.